in mind for that one, who's not no longer present.
Oh, okay.
Like it was somebody who likes to sit back.
Yeah.
And and talk, which was fine, but then you know I'm like.
We need lapel mics, that way we can sit back and concentrate.
Oh, that's a whole another.
Is that gonna be your contribution?
No, so so I do, I help our church with the live streaming. And for Christmas Eve, they they were talking about having everybody mic, and I'm like, you have gone from a volunteer to like a complete audio engineer.
High production, sure.
Yeah, that's why I I can't do that. So. We might get better microphones, but not everybody's gonna be lapel mic. It's alright. But see, I'm awful at taking photos.
But I'm waiting for there to be pretty flowers outside.
Oh, and then we're gonna get new ones? Oh, good, okay.
Amber did let me down with the portrait mode.
It was not good.
The mayor's looks fantastic.
That's because he knows how to do it.
See, I can, as long as I take your picture, it's like, wait until I have the goofiest look on my face, and that's when I'm fully taken.
It wasn't amateur.
I mean, it's fine, we just need to do over.
We'll just take turns, I'll take Christine and she'll take Matt, Matt will take.
That'll be, that'll be good.
Let's go in. Cause then it's like, there's no, if you're a square, it's gonna be.
I, I get them all the time.
Yeah, it's funny, we we have those at work too, when we get them at work, and you know, you think that the management, you know, what, see, okay, who's gonna click on it, who's gonna click on their eBay order?
Yeah, it's probably mostly management that's.
Well, no, my boss, well, you probably is, no, my boss is like the second, we'll get it, like, he's sending out a mass text message to everybody, and he's like, okay, don't click on the email, just delete it, and it's like, he totally defeats the purpose.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. I think it, I think it reflects negatively on on them or something, and that's why he does it.
Oh, I bet it does, yeah.
So it's like, I can, I can spot those.
Cause there's so many offenses, you probably, probably yes, have like a training session or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can spot those, the the system generated test phishing emails like in the file, okay, so. Their UPS packages won't go back tomorrow, it's like, oh, that's why they didn't order.
Right, although I always guess something that could be coming, but I still, I'm usually.
Well.
Yeah.
We've been.
Yeah, no, it's. No, well, I mean, ultimately, I mean, that's where my mind wins, like, I don't.
Yeah, well, they need help, I mean, I technically teach that, I'm technically not a member, but I'm a life member, so.
I'm a life member.
I'm a life member, yeah, cause I'm.
I think the mayor's as well.
Yeah. So I'll probably help out some of the great things, like, maybe I'll do, like, special revokes and probably just bear. I'll probably definitely go there, it's generally you help out for setup and or and or teardown, and then you volunteer, and you just like two nights a week, your kids get to like the nice. So it's like, how expensive it is, it's like, man, I'll volunteer, I'll hang out with small folks, right, yeah, exactly, so, yeah.
We got this one, Phil and Christopher.
Hmm.
We use that one to, to like, we started on the hand, we, we, we're shredding.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's like, I think we directed that person that part of the.
Kelly called me and asked me for the details, cause she's seen those written lots of calls, I was, oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
April twenty-third. Eleven to two. And shredding will be in your parking lot, and, yeah.
Yeah, that worked well.
Oh, you need the.
Cause that's cool, that's cool, my mom has a whole bunch of stuff, she shreds.
Oh, good, good.
Like, we could pay the kids to feed it through the, for the next ten hours, through the.
We shred it.
We, we thought that.
He's got two.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
And then the.
Eleven to two. So I think we need to ask them, along the same age, I mean, it's probably too late to do for her, maybe she's, that's what, four, five, six.
Twenty-two.
Second or fourth, yeah.
I was. And I don't know how the agents maybe get cheap out, but what's it called, safe parties? You know, they do the electronics and like the paint, uh, paint recycling, by the head, and then, you know, and I don't know if that's a cost to us, if they come out, or how that works.
But you know, they, last year, like, I.
Oh, you guys say this?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, like, this year, so come again this year.
Oh, so, they'll be here this year?
It's not safe party.
But it's paint recycling.
It's not big.
Oh, okay, cause I've got so many great plans.
Safe.
We have to have it. For granted?
Okay. Yes, cause I think they usually just dump it all into like fifty-five yard thing, and they probably harden it, or whatever.
Like, or just log in to.
Yeah, that happens. Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
But I can.
Yep.
Right, great, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, I'd, I'd literally, less than an hour and fifteen minutes one day, to try to get it like.
I mean, you could log in through the web portal, but I don't think it's gonna work nice.
I did, I ended up doing a shortcut from.
Yeah.
But even then, it didn't, it wasn't.
I could only get a four minute.
Right, yeah, it was weird, it was just weird.
Well, not adding it this year, but.
Maybe it's not. Um.
No.
Uh. It's a clean, is it? I wrote a word, I said, yeah, it's a clean hardware.
On the side, no.
So it's this website, I need to put them on my back, on my back, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
It's for people to see.
On this, this cycle, this is the top.
Yeah, and we'll, we apply for the grant again, but we presume we'll get more signage than we've had in the past, to try to judge people, but I talked with Frank, and we talked with police officer Patrick, who directed traffic last year, and they came up with this plan, and I think it's the best option, so. We try.
Set the website to.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't, they have two notifications themselves, right?
Yeah, and it'll be messy, but.
They, they.
I'm glad you guys do that, though, it's.
It's cool.
Yeah, this is one, anything else, do you ever say, or? No. Signal.
At the.
Oh, yes, there's a, very light battery.
Charge.
Well, it's plugged in, I'm sure, it's not, it is plugged in.
Well, but it'll take a second to build up enough.
Oh, yeah. If it was truly dead. It doesn't, it doesn't have a.
Right.
So like, sometimes, it's.
Or set an auto lock, have your.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I was actually playing, again, I guess people may, to my, it's really so.
It's pretty cool. Yeah, we did give you.
On the, on the hook, especially since I'm a longer part of the organization, so I should, I think, I'd go into like stores or park and rave and something like that. Yes, please.
Hey, sorry.
A lot in here, so I wasn't.
Beautiful night.
I did open up, I don't know what's coming on.
We usually. He brought the whole thing in?
Yeah, Jamie or Matt, I can't remember, somebody told me.
Hello, hello, how are you guys? I saw you're giving some work in our neighborhood, uh, great.
Yeah.
Do not.
Yeah, I can't believe you're already doing it, yeah, half, half gets paid, right?
Not quite half, yeah.
Okay, cause we were going down the other line in next year, cause the fact that half the neighbors, they are bad. Really bad.
Only a mill or extra, and then filling cracks.
Yeah. Yeah, because remember there was, like, there was that weird line in two. Yeah, and now, like.
I saw that, cause I, I thought I had in my mind.
Yes.
No, it was, it was a day or two earlier, though.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, well, I was like, went through a call.
Yeah, is it because, uh, what did you?
Cause you have a purse bag.
So, so no one, they didn't have, like, the beautiful video, like, everything went perfectly.
Well, they wanted.
I am so excited to see that, I mean, you just came to help, but the excitement. Is it, yeah, yep.
And I liked it. Yeah, it was why I.
Yep.
Why would you run so.
I love.
Because I'm a whole member, that's, I'm gonna do another half marathon, so I, I do triathlon a lot, I love swimming, I love biking, I hate running, so I put up.
I think so.
I don't know, I, I wanna do sprints, so it's like a five kilo.
I believe.
Right. Right?
I do seven hundred fifty meter swim, and generally like twelve mile, like, yeah, it's not, one, one of them's like a sixteen mile, generally for sprints.
Have you ever done?
And if you can't have a marathon, I did, yeah, I did that last year, and I did, my buddy was like, he was around Christmas, he's like, it was special, it's only twenty-six dollars, do it again, we should do it, and I'm like.
You know what, so.
Alright, whatever, and then he's like, a couple weeks ago, he's like.
And I, we were probably, and impulsively signed up, you just always get back to it.
Yes.
It's a nice one, you know.
You don't give it away, you just play.
It was, man, it was, it sure looked around a lot last year, that was.
It is really great, thank you, very much appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think it was almost emotive, you know, it's like, oh, we've gotta be coming to the turnaround point, you know.
It's been so great for us, cause for you to have all that. Tina, you normally don't get that, cause you kind of, especially my husband, where.
I've done that one in the other town.
Public sector, or private sector, private, private law, and then.
Yeah, six and a half, every.
From public, and it, but like, that spirit is so good, but we don't realize that.
It's.
That could be.
I have a slower, I'm not, I'm not out there at seven o'clock.
That would be nice, like, we don't get that either, and at the end, we're like. It's, you know.
I was rattling.
Right.
Yeah, which doesn't seem right either, some of these things, weird.
No, he was up to, I was sitting off, and I was saying, what's the longer one down?
Oh, nice, he knows.
I understand that.
Oh, where are you?
That's that builder has to come up with an ox box on the grass, to develop.
Yes, yeah, yep, they, they just haven't given it, cause they need to.
Build a fire, brother, build a fire.
Are people going through?
No, not yet, but the construction.
When, how's the start?
Well, sure, if I'm a construction, I'm gonna go as short as what, so, anyhow.
Work case for our own.
I hear you. But no, nobody's using this, bro. I'm just trying to get proactive.
Yeah, no, I'll get one.
Alright, thanks.
Might as well, you know, get it to us, so.
Yeah, yeah. This isn't a big deal.
Right.
Oh, that's cool.
It might be a big deal, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I guess we're gonna start.
Well, wait, do you have?
Yeah.
Okay, how are you?
All right.
So you said hello. It's always an invitation.
And now call to order, the public hearing of March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, time is six forty-five, Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Shroyd?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member Wire?
Here.
Member McLeeser?
Here.
Member Ores Absent, six present.
Okay, at this time, we will begin the public comment portion of our agenda. First and only item is ordinance six dash twenty-two, Ben, would you please read the title for the record?
An ordinance amending chapter eleven twenty-seven, establishment of districts and maps, specifically section eleven twenty-seven point oh one, establishment of districts of codified ordinances of the city of Northampton in order to remove the chart of districts contained therein.
Okay, chairman of the roll, would you like to summarize?
Just reiterate or refresh memories, this is an effort to to make a housekeeping or technical correction. So we have the permitted uses listed in one location as opposed to two, so down the road, if we change one, we air and don't complete the other, we don't have an inconsistency. So, one location.
Sounds.
Yes, one word. Any questions?
Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance?
Come on, Brad.
I'll make a cup of tea.
Okay, seeing done, at this time, anyone wishing to speak against the ordinance?
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven, East Street, southeast, Northampton, Ohio. I don't have any position either way, I just came up here to speak. I did not hear a single word Mr. Revolt said back here, I don't know what this is about. I'm up here to ask you, speak up. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Anyone from council? Comments, administration? That's it?
It says it all.
Okay, no further comments?
We adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A jerk.
You're gonna laugh around the park.
Yeah.
And that's where you can start to sign.
Right.
It's a fair one.
Yeah. She, we should throw it at six fifty-five. Exactly.
Give us a. It's like, like, I'm, I'm clicking, but it's always a delay.
I'm from Nashville, you know.
We're gonna have a national, today, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Wait, I don't want to.
We're, we're on Zoom, yeah, it was regional today, it's gonna be Nashville tomorrow, Wednesday.
You wouldn't.
Well, today is regional.
So they don't want me here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like.
For most. I wish for this, because it's, it's the same guy. Hey, everybody's having like, big gestures, hey, you're on here, you know, you did it the whole day.
That's exactly. Like, come on.
Except now we do it less, like, I had it, you know, we do it all the time, but now I get on it, and I'm like.
Well, maybe it's just me, cause I work for.
Yeah.
I think we have the conference calls for the passing. I think I'm slow to drive, bring it over today.
It's all those things where you do a lot of, you know. I just have it used, me too, same, yeah, okay, I thought it was really good.
I don't know, like, to me, it's not.
You have to like start seeing, like, it all, it's like this. Yeah. Instincture for your.
Well, there you go, it's not meant for like.
Right, 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 we don't choose that.
But I use a channel, he just, he loves to use two for everything, and, you know, like, I would just sit there and think of how to connect with somebody.
Yes.
If I did not already have a meeting schedule, you know, like, I'm gonna call my cousin, it's like, so, I would just call her and say, hey, I'm sending you a room for a meeting.
No, she, my work. It like disappears.
So if you ever. Yeah, but it's, it's not, it's like, finding, you know, like, we'll count it, we'll count it, so, yeah, it would, I don't know, like, people, like, I'm like, I'm. So then, she always was like, can you just.
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, oh, I thought my.
Right, yeah.
We give up.
Crappy.
Oh, yeah, there's that.
Realize that.
Let me revisit.
Your, your kids are going around. But we have the white.
Yeah, yes, yeah, you know.
I am going from the no appointment.
Which I don't. Like, I wish. Cause I like.
It's coming out.
Which is probably, okay. But yeah. All that dumb sound, all of the ground. You know? Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I really like my like.
Yeah. Oh, no, I like that, just like, it's very like putty.
Hard there.
That would be right. But I'm like. No, that's. The gel, okay, so then, they have given it or something.
But then I realized, I took a fourteen hour.
So you're like, wait, I can take it out, yeah, can I get on Amazon, I feel like you'd be, yeah, yeah.
Acetone, it means foil.
Yes. Right, okay, so I did that, so I, I did like a little bit, and, and so, it was kind of fun, but.
Well.
And I'm not gonna get it, and then, so if I don't get it. Then, like, when I had to do.
That's a great, I think that's.
Boil, but then also a little bit, it's kind of. If you can ask me, that came on the video, because of the same kind of process.
Exactly, I'm just.
You should do that. I mean, this is. And I was like. Yeah, it's weird, and I'm, and I'm like a boil saver, so I was like. Yeah. That was like reuse, and I'm not like, you know, some people like.
Oh, yes.
And I'm not, I'm at, when you boil it for a hundred hours.
Yeah.
And.
And then.
How did you end up? Last time? Oh, still, no, they lost.
Did you get my message?
Did you, can I?
Huh?
Last week?
I'm like, I don't know what that was made for.
Did you email me?
No one else is doing this.
I called with the voicemail.
Oh, okay, no, I did not get that, but what did, what did you need?
Well, what you're doing tonight is a tie-in between the whole K-marks.
Well, we'll probably explain.
Are we sharing any, yeah, additional, yeah?
Well, we'll, we'll answer some of the questions to him.
Son, okay, I'll wait.
Hey, Ralph, when are we getting this valve turning truck?
I don't know when it's coming in, I don't have time.
Cause I, I've seen a lot, looking them up, you know, I've seen a lot of machines to put on a flatbed or whatever, I just wonder. What cities get.
Yeah, I, I don't even know. To be honest.
Must be really fancy. Well, we'll see what it gets here.
Yeah. I know they're excited about it, so, it must be pretty nice.
Probably got a sleeper on it or something.
Two, that same, oh, is that not her, no.
No.
But she has this ring right now.
It is this one?
Yeah. It's hanging out.
Yeah.
That's where you buy all her control ring?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This is too, too real.
How, how did you like start getting, tell me, actually?
I go to events that she's at, and I know her, and I buy stuff, I mean, you know, and I.
She really is?
I mean, I like her stuff. Yeah. But I'm always like.
I know, but it's great, it's.
But it's like hammered.
How much did you know that one?
Thirty-eight dollars.
And it's like, like, this, like.
Well, I mean, I. I two years ago, before that, no, so.
I don't know.
Did you see my pie?
Oh, I did, I did.
I'm gonna.
Yeah.
I like helping.
Yeah. I do, but I. Kind of different. I mean, I love, it's gonna dash right there, yeah, it's gonna break, yeah.
Wow, those are five.
Like, you wear them every day, and then you wear this every day?
No, I wear that. I wear this every day.
Do you?
I wear these. And then three.
It was funny.
And then I.
I like to.
Okay.
How are you?
How are you?
Okay, I figured all was good.
Clearly wrote this quick.
You do.
But aren't you like. Not my mind.
You're being harassed by a member of council.
Was actually typing this while you were talking.
Yes. Like, oh.
Put the.
Oh, and I was like, yeah. Oh, my God. That's great.
And now call to order, the committee of the whole meeting on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the time is seven P M, Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member McLeeser?
Here.
Member Wire?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member Shroyd?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Ores Absent, six present.
We have a motion to exchange number Ores.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries? Three, community and economic development, there.
Pursuant to. Pursuant to some earlier conversations, I'd like to take this item three A and three B, and.
And. Have the administration summarize them for the record. Patrick?
Okay, thank you. These are two different and distinct pieces of legislation. And reading from the title, as titles often are, it's hard to. See which one of these that we're dealing with. So I'm gonna just take them in the order that I choose. I'm not sure which one is three A or three B. But for three A, for the one that I'm looking at first is dealing with the existing Kmart assemblage of land that we've put together up there. And we had secured bond anticipation notes a year ago, May twelfth of two thousand twenty-one. And those bond anticipation notes were for a one-year period. So we are approaching the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two expiration. In light of the recent economic developments in which the Federal Reserve Board of the United States is embarking upon a raising of interest rates, which ultimately will work its way through the economic food chain and cause interest rates to go up for every type of aspect of. I reached out in conjunction with the finance director to. Explore the possibility of securing an interest rate in effect in late February that would be locked in now prior to the rate increases happening for these bonds that are gonna come up in May of twenty-two. Our request is to secure new one-year bonds as we move closer to closing on the number of the parcels there. And retire these notes from May of two thousand twenty-one, so repay those and lock in for a new one-year period at an interest rate of one point four percent. So the amount that we would be. Redoing would be in the amount of. I'm doing this one first. That's the next one we'll talk about. This first one, so I'm gonna. Yeah, so that's a total of four point five two-four million. So the two-four or twenty-four thousand are the borrowing costs to have the bond anticipation notes issued. So the amount that we're borrowing is four point five. And so that will replace the ones that are expiring. It would be at the current ones, which will be good for one year. And we, you know, our anticipation is that we will not be renewing those a year from now. So in the event that their closings start to recur. The. GINA will hold those funds in order to pay that off then on May twelfth of two thousand twenty. Sorry, May ninth of two thousand twenty-three. That's the plan on that one.
Patrick, you had raised a question. And I would direct counsel just very briefly. Issue of the retirement is covered in item three B. Draw your attention to page twelve. Probably the fourth whereas, but for the second whereas, you'll notice that that's the ordinance that manages the retirements. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. All right, so. Then the other one that is for consideration, whichever one it is, A or B. Is for a direct placement like the others. A direct placement is different than a bond option. We can get a better rate. We believe that the rate that we can lock in for this series of bond anticipation notes is also one point four percent. And the administration is recommending that. We secure funding in the amount of two point five million for other economic development projects that are in negotiations. So the total that we are seeking, including the costs to borrow, would be if done, if both are done, would be seven million thirty-one thousand five hundred. And those again would also be one-year bond anticipation notes. And because they're for economic development purposes, they are, these are not tax-exempt bonds.
Mr. McLeister?
Nothing to add, sir?
Okay. Counsel? All right, so the, what I'm, I will make a motion that item three A, this is the two-point-five-million-dollar new money, if you will, as with your reference, second, second set of comments, be moved to the council agenda. That is item three A. New debt.
Section is made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion then. Are there any questions regarding three B? This is the retirement, I guess, would be called the reissuance, for want of a better phrase, of the original four-point-five million that funded the first tranche of economic development activity. Are there any questions or comments? And I will make a motion that item three B be moved to the council agenda.
Second?
Who can second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you lose my portion, you need it. Thank you, Mr. Deorio.
Okay, moving on to street and alley. Start with. Four A, that's me. So this is authorizing the vacation, I'm gonna read this because it's very complex to understand without. Authorizing the vacation of a portion of Woodside Avenue Northeast from the south property line of parcel one zero zero one two one seven two to the north property line of parcel number nine two eight zero zero one nine, located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canyon. Ben, did you put that map?
Law pull up right there. Yeah.
That helps somewhat. It's confusing. We, this has been talked about for a while. Is the administration wanna weigh in with this in any way?
So this is what would be considered part of the Sanctuary Five development. And this would be on the western edge of that development. And the lots there. Have joined a parcel of city land that was an undedicated street. It was, if it was ever built, it would have been an extension of Woodside. So that's why it's called Woodside Avenue Northeast. And would run, you know, in that area adjacent to, but west of the Sanctuary Five. And then on the other side of that is the high school parking lot. And if you pulled into the high school parking lot and went to the back of the property, it's on that, what would be your right side and your external corner. So one of the items that we had requested of the developer and of the school was that in the event that, you know, as these homes are constructed or whatever, we're concerned about getting emergency access into the sanctuary and not having to run all the way up Main, all the way down Apple Road, and all the way back down around into the back end of the sanctuary. So this would be a different way to get there that would only be available to emergency vehicles. So we had a agreement drawn up that the developer would lead over to us a part of a parcel of the Sanctuary Five development that would be wide enough for us to construct a cement pad driveway, if you will, that would connect that street, go through this vacated portion that we're talking about with Woodside, vacate that out, get us out of the middle. And connect to the school parking lot. So both the school and the developer have agreed to what we had put together as far as an agreement prepared by not Krugliak. And this will ensure that we will be able to get there. So Mr. Graham's team will be charged with the schematics, the engineering, on how this stuff goes when they're getting ready to start the development. So we've worked out some arrangements. They're gonna clear the land for us and then get it prepped for us to kind of do our thing that we need to do. But both chiefs, particularly fieryness, are in favor of this. And they've been strong proponents of us doing this to make it so they can do their job quicker.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Actually, you did say it would be gated, you said?
Yeah, what we're proposing is that at the juncture of what will become now, you know, since we're vacating the street, the two property owners will now meet. So the school property and Sanctuary Five parcel will meet. And where they meet, we're proposing putting in bollards.
Okay.
Similar to the ones that you saw over behind the pine cone.
Okay.
The black bollards. There's emergency keys, unlock those and dispose of, knock those aside so that an emergency vehicle can get free. Something to that effect. We were wanting to do that there rather than my conversations with the school, rather than at the edge of their parking lot. Be too easy for a rambunctious driver to just go around that in the grass and then drive up through and cut through, so we didn't want that. And likewise, on the other end, we didn't feel it would be as effective out of the curb. So we thought this would be the most effective place to put it that would deter other people from wanting to try to just get through.
Okay. Thanks.
My understanding that half of what we're vacating is going to the school and the other half is going to the developer?
The other half will go to the individual property, to the developer for now, but eventually they'll be replanted to incorporate the backyards of any of the other additional properties that will be on that side.
Okay, but half of it is going to the school then?
Can't hear ya.
Okay. Half of it is going to the school?
Yes.
Thank you.
The preliminary plat on your agenda next actually shows includes the vacated land from this, if it is approved.
On face five?
On face five.
Thank you. Anyone else further comments, questions? Okay. So do I need to make a motion for the public hearing?
Yes, we don't need to make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Okay. So I'd like to make a, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two at six forty-five P. M. for this ordinance?
Vol will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Real quick for the record, the reason it's such a short timeframe until the hearing is because all of the letting property owners have signed the petition. So we don't have to do the normal long process.
So there's no, no need to reach out to everybody that's already agreed and signed off on it?
I mean, I will have to send them a letter, but I no longer have to publish on a newspaper. They'd waive that, right?
And then can I have a motion in a second to move item four A onto the council agenda?
Revol will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And then moving on to four B, I'm gonna refuse myself from this. G. G. Now that map is left, so four B is actually the Sanctuary Phase Five and how that fits into the things that Patrick was speaking about earlier and accepting their preliminary plat. So, Mr. Deorio, would you care to add anything other than what you mentioned about access to the school? I was at the planning commission meeting. I know they went through this in great detail. They removed their petition, reworked some things, came back. Mr. Dan Gundy was very pleased with the results of what they had and ready to move forward.
Yeah, it was a great team effort involving legal and building and the developer and the school and administration.
Teamwork.
Yep.
Seeing nothing, I will take a motion to move this to the council agenda.
Revol will move?
I am second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief Kemp, will you grab Mr. Strick and bring him back in?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I motion adjourn.
No seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
All right.
Myers?
Yeah.
I'm not in this with any economic developments.
You can't tell me what the time is.
Are you in?
There's six months of one hour. Have you signed a new option?
It sounds like they're telling you.
If you don't daylight.
Maybe there's some of the hearing. I didn't notice those. There was no presentation, right?
No, they didn't have a presentation on the side.
No, that's what we planned, but not.
I swear for a minute.
I'm nicely convinced. They're.
Right? Yeah, 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 yeah. No. No. Yeah, no, I would have liked to.
Yeah.
But. Oh, wow. So. Are they going to? Okay. Okay, okay.
Trust me.
Yeah. Yeah. That was really impressive, that's funny.
Look, I was like, it's nice.
Why appreciate your.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it was though.
Was it?
It's the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was. It's really good.
That's his last name.
Okay, all right.
What's that?
I noticed it when you were sleeping.
I mean, you're right.
So I can only presume that Myers has not taken the option.
I did notice that. But it's like.
I'm gonna dig up one of those shirts.
They're awesome.
What is it for?
It's original Penguin, did you see it? Those are good.
No. Is it a bunny? And that's the brand? Is this one your daughter's making? Okay.
It's a, it's a national brand?
It is? Oh, my God. I've never seen it. Do you have shirts like that?
I do.
Uh-uh.
So my niece drew me something like this, like almost exactly that size. And it had random X's over the eyes. It was like really. But I framed it because I thought it was funny.
You're like, leave this down.
Yes. Is that where she got the idea or is that where they got it?
She should, she could be a bloody trash.
That's fine.
But I love it, yes, I like. But the last one I got, the green, it's like this one.
I like that. Matt always has like, like this, and then they always got something like cloud or something.
Yeah.
Like he's always got something else. Yeah, he's always got something on the side.
This one doesn't.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I get that, yeah. Looks good.
They're funny.
Oh, great.
To the rest of the day?
Thanks.
All right, you too.
Next evening?
Is that you?
I thought I needed. Hello? Hey. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm good.
You too.
I, you know, I, that amazing that anybody built that down there. That thing is so low.
All good.
Ben has the Columbus Magazine, Columbus City Door article. Yeah. He's gonna make copies and ship it all around. Okay. I think the biggest thing that we're trying to do is we don't have, they can, one of the counties has a food truck. And we don't have, you know, from May to September or May to October. We don't have, you know, places where we have food trucks. So. Go to the football, go, go, go to the food truck.
The drivers are struggling now.
Who is that?
Food trucks are struggling.
Well, that's why we need it, we can help them.
They're struggling right now because of the cost of food, the cost of meat. Getting to the point where they can, I talked to a guy this past week and said, I'm at fifteen dollars for a burger and I'm losing money.
Well, it's interesting, I had, I had a burger, I had a burger Saturday night. And that thing was only about this big and I think I paid thirteen dollars for it.
Cost of meat is just right as a hand.
It was good, but it wasn't, wasn't worth thirteen dollars.
He said he's part of his food.
You know what, you know what's like, you know, after our, our guy, who's. Mayor Wilder, how do you hope to ever build a safety center if you keep going into debt in other areas?
I'm not gonna discuss anything.
You're not gonna have any debt capacity left?
Discuss anything, will you? Very simple.
Is this a democracy or is this a?
Oh, it's a, okay.
Members of the KGB or something?
You, are you gonna leave now? Cause I'm gonna turn my.
Turn them out?